Good morning. Today is Wednesday, the 25th of September. It's 9:00 a.m. This is a regular meeting of Grimes County Commissioners Court. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. We're going, we've called our meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation, followed by the pledge to the U.S. flag, Texas flag. We're going to ask Brother Charles Thompsons from the Salem House of Blessings, if he would delete our invocation. If you would, please stand.
Let us pray. Father, I'll be coming thanking you first of all for this day. This is a day that you have made. In the midst of this, Father, we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we ask your blessings now upon this court. Your word has taught us, Father, in the book of Romans, the 13th chapter, that obey them, they have ruled over us. Father, you have set this court up to make decisions, Father, that will regulate laws and behavior. So we ask your blessings upon each, upon the judge, upon each commissioner, everyone that is part of this court. We ask your wisdom to intervene, that everything will be dissolved and you will be well pleased. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor, protect this flag. I pledge allegiance to the D.C. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much. Would you be seated, please? We will now move. Ms. Murr, did we have any?
No.
Okay. We are moving to public comments. Nobody did sign in to make any comments. With that, we'll move to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, number six. And I believe that's it. Consent agenda item number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Consent agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Consent agenda item number five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for August 2019 and the unauthorized advertisement of Abbott David of same in accordance with local government code 114.026. That's page seven of this agenda. And agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and line item transfers. And commissioners, there are a few of those to review. And hopefully you've had time to review those. Comments, questions on any of those four consent agenda items?
If there are no comments or questions, then I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
Second. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, on consent agenda items three, four, five, and six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We will now go to agenda item number seven. Commissioners Court Precinct Two. Commissioner Dobianski, we're going to consider and recognize the following employee for their years of service. Jessica Murphy, 10 years of service.
My pleasure this morning to present a pen to Jessica. If you'd please come forward.
Ms. Murphy, would you come forward? And she's getting it on Budget Approval Day. We know Budget Approval Day. There you go. Congratulations.
Congrats, man.
Going to take the money and run. Okay. She's our budget auditor. So she's, she's been through the wringer for the last couple of months. So we appreciate all that she does.
We do.
We will go to agenda item number eight. That's Texas A&amp;M, AgriLife County Extension Agent, Alan Holman. But Alan's not, he's, I understand that he's on special assignment by the area director, regional director, still doing some animal cleanup and helping on the effects of Amilda from Winnie, Beaumont, and all that area. And I think it says a lot for our county and also for AgriLife when they were able to share their resources with one area to another. So, but I believe you want something to be presented?
Yes.
All right.
National 4H Week, you told it first.
And just call her Hayes?
Yes, Ms. Hayes. She's been with us before.
Okay, so it's National 4H Week on October 6th through the 12th. And what National 4H Week is, all the kids that's in 4H go around the community and do different community service activities. And today, we actually have Chana, who's the president. And Jacobi, come to me. I want to say Jacobi.
Sure. My name is Chana Williams. I am the president of my charm and sewing club, my forge club. And I am also the youth president of the council. And I, what I do in my club is I help people be organized and to get what they need to get. And then-
Could you work with us?
And what I also do in council is I get information and then I present it to just many different clubs like Iowa. And I present it and then I'd be like, you need to do this and this is what we have. And then we also do fundraisers. And in my school, I'm, I play many different sports. And I'm also the youth president of my church.
Chana, what school do you go to?
Um, never said a high school. And I would like to say thank y'all for supporting guys and just believing in us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Jacobi Matthews. I've been here for 4H for about seven years now. I attend Anderson Shiro. And there, I'm one of the football players, number 54.
Stand down, crowd. This is a court.
As you can see, we're doing pretty good right now. I'm the vice president of Charm and Sewing 4H Club. And I'm also on the council board, my council delegate. And in the way 4H has impacted me, it has been tremendously wonderful being 4H. I've met, I've been able to meet new people. I've been places such as Washington, D.C. That was a good experience for me, first time riding an airplane. Kind of nervous, but there, we talked about a lot of good things, met new people. 4H has been good to me.
So we have the proclamation that we'll let the judge read. And then we have two of them and y'all can sign it and give me one back and y'all can keep one.
We sure will. National 4H Week proclamation. Whereas, the Grimes County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 112 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this adm- this admirable, admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, health, and helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in the ages from eight to 19, hail the diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not be, could not achieve the success that it has today were it not for the service of its 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energy, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made the state strong and great. Now, therefore it be, resolve the Grimes County Commissioners Court hereby designated October 6th through 12th, 2019 as National 4H Week in Texas and commend the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program's success. Congratulations. And I take pleasure in signing this. So Jacobi, do you remember the score from the weekend? What was it, 43 to? 46 to zero. No mercy on the opponents, huh? And it's back to school after this is done, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we will, we will keep one for our record. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And also that it's tough case for everyone outside.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Sure, sure. Jacobi, Chana, kids. Commissioners? Let me get y'all to scoot around over here. Now, Jacobi, don't get in front of me. I want to be in the picture.
Can we run here?
Do your best, Commissioner.
Top of the chair.
You were trying to hide.
Huh?
Three, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
One more. Ms. Murr.
One more, one more, one more from our auditor.
She's taken about four, I know. I'm counting my fingers.
Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you all. Oh, y'all didn't say something. Thank you. Thank you.
Jacobi, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jacobi, thank you.
Thank you, young lady. Thank you, young man.
Thank you, buddy. That's what makes all of this worthwhile. All right, we will move to agenda item number nine. Human Resources Director Lucy Pope. Review and approve the 2020 retiree medical program renewal with United Healthcare and authorized county judges' signatory attachment. Number nine, Ms. Pope?
Yes. The renewal for the supplement for our retirees has to come in. Last year it went down, this year it's gone up. So I just need y'all's approval to renew this plan. I have 22 on the plan now. And I, it looks like I'm going to add two more before the end of the year. So we'll have 24. And anyone else that decides to retire that wants this supplement. But it's a very good supplement for our retirees.
And the difference is what, $12.17 from last year to this year?
Yes, sir.
Does the county absorb that?
Thirty percent. The retirees pay 70% and we've already agreed to pay 30%. You know, when I did my medical and dental, y'all approved that we would keep that up.
Okay.
And that's staying with the same plan?
With the same plan. Yeah, I have some that have been on this plan for years and years and years.
Any questions for Ms. Pope?
I move to approve the 2020 retiree medical program renewal with the United Healthcare and Authorized County Judges' signatory.
Second. There is a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion or comments?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, ma'am. Thank you, Charles. We will go to agenda item number 10. District Clerk Diane LaFlore reconsider and take action on certificate pay for criminal deputy district clerk.
Good morning. How are y'all?
How are you?
Thank y'all for letting me speak this morning. And of course, with nerves, like I read it. But I wanted to say that I'm here today, of course, to ask that you reconsider certificate pay for my criminal deputy clerk. I would like to just say that I feel that Jennifer, with her master certification training, plays a vital role having to report the criminal justice information system, which is the SEJIS. And it's her responsibility, as required in her job description, to correctly report the disposition and the criminal history of that defendant within seven days, which will be effective January 1st, like I told y'all in the past. We will have seven days to report that. And our grants depend on the performance of my criminal clerk, which I believe is very important to this county. And we have to be at 90% on our reporting. So with that, I appreciate some consideration.
Well, Ms. LaFlore, this was brought to the agenda a couple of weeks ago. And while I appreciate, I think it is great that we have certain, we all seek to maybe better ourselves and have, we have talents, differing talents among us. But my concern, two weeks ago, just as it is today, is we have so many people that enter information into SEJIS. Being a master certified peace officer or jailer, whatever it was when she left the county, the sheriff's office, and came to your office as a clerk, we have a lot of clerks that have different certifications. But this is not a requirement of the job to be able to enter information into SEJIS. So you have several departments that will enter information into SEJIS.
And Those, excuse me, but I think those departments have the master certificates. It'd be the DA's office and the sheriff's department.
You also have the county attorney's office. You have the county clerk's office. And as I stated two weeks ago, you're, the lady that holds the position has already been working in your office for two years. It wasn't a requirement when she took the job. It hasn't been a requirement. You did the same job for years. There was no requirement for you to have a master certification. My understanding is the master certification is for peace officers. The difference to me, well, maybe I'm wrong. I see you shaking your head. But the difference is, the reason this was brought up was because somebody transferred from the sheriff's office to the district attorney's office. Those are two law enforcement offices. I feel that if it was necessary or if it was a requirement, then the state would require you to hold her certificate. Are you able to hold her certificate?
Her certificate?
Good, she gets her. No, is your office able to hold her certificate?
Sure.
So you are a law enforcement office?
No. No. We work closely with law enforcement.
So you can't hold her certificate?
Her certificate's held at the sheriff's.
At the sheriff's office. If the state had required that you have a master certificate to do the job, you would have the opportunity to hold a certificate. So the certificate didn't transfer over to her office when it came, when she came two years ago. But it's not a requirement for you to work the SEJIS machine. I mean, the SEJIS system. That's not a requirement of the state. And my fear is, there are so many other employees that seek certificates or have certificates to do their jobs or they do, they do it just for the benefit of knowing how to do my job better. It's an advantage to me, you know? But should the county have to compensate them for every certificate they have? I'm afraid that if we go this way, then we're going to be opening floodgates of I got a certificate over here or I got a certificate over there. And it may not be to the advantage of that department to even, for them to even have that certificate, but they want to get certificate pay. So to me, if the state had required that it be part of the job, they would have listed it as a requirement on the job. It's never been listed on a requirement of the job that you have to hold a master's degree, I mean, certificate to enter information. Everyone else that works on the SEJIS system, they're not required to have a master certificate to work on it. So are we now going to open, are we now going to start requiring them to have certificates? Okay, one other point is, the reason why that came up was a change in the office. They had a change in the criminal court at law and that position moved over, that ran the T-Lex machine. That position moved over to the criminal court and the person they hired came out of the sheriff's office who had a master's degree, I mean, certificate, and they could run the T-Lex machine for another law enforcement agency. Your office is not law enforcement in terms of holding a certificate. You can't hold a certificate. The other thing was, we, according to our policy, have a set time that we review job descriptions and the grade structure, which we set that policy in place so that we're not at the last minute here when it's time to do a budget for the preceding, next year. We're not at the last minute changing job descriptions. We're not changing the grade structure. This should have been brought earlier in the year if you felt that her certificate was pertinent to the job. We set up February and May, you know, as that time of year for you to bring job description changes or anything like that. It was only because of the change in their personnel that it came up this time of year. So that's the policy we set forth. And we set it forth for that simple reason. Like I said, it's not necessary for her, or requirement, required for her to have that certificate to do the job that she does.
But the ability she has to do that job is going to keep us in compliance to get our grants. It's going to help a lot.
That would be, I'm going to give you another example. That would be like if somebody left the sheriff's office and go over to Roden Bridge. And because they've worked in safety for so long, then I want to bring my master certificate over here to operate a machine because-
That doesn't have anything to do with the SEJIS.
Yes, it does. They hold a master. SEJIS does not require that you have a master certificate.
No, but the knowledge definitely helps to-
But it's not a requirement.
To protect our sheriff's office.
We're talking about the requirements of the job.
So let me just add one more thing to the qualifications. And that is the fact that I think it's a bonus, a big bonus, the license that Jennifer holds, that she uses and can use in the courtroom. Because she can assist the deputies because she's licensed. And if we've got a trial going on, I think I've already explained this, and we have the defendant that's bound and the deputy that's guarding her has to go to the restroom or guarding them, has to go to the restroom or have a break. They can give that little device to her and she can take it over. And nobody else can do that, that I don't think, that works. And it's just a bonus, like I said.
But that's why we have bailiffs in the room. And you also-
They're not trained to do the, I mean, that handing-
You have bailiffs and you have other peace officers who are in the room. They're guarding the judge if nothing else.
That's it, right.
Okay, he has to remain guarded. So although that is a benefit that she can do in the courtroom, that's not what she's been hired to do out of your office. Your office is she's a district clerk deputy.
That is correct. But she thinks enough of our county to do that. And she thinks enough of her officers to help, but-
But that's not a requirement of the job she's working. You know, she left the sheriff's office and came over to the district clerk. That's not a requirement of the job that she does. And like I said, that is only the concern I have. If we approve this today, then we're going to be looking at a lot more certificates coming forth. Because I do realize there are other positions in the county that have master certificates that do not receive master's pay because they don't do, they don't work in that capacity on a day-to-day basis. This is what it was explained to me. For instance, you have dispatchers that are serving the jails sometimes and they have certificates. They're not seeking, their supervisors don't seek certificate pay for them because they don't feel like it's a day-to-day operation. So I'm just saying, you have to be careful of, if it's a requirement of the job. Okay, and that's, we also set up a board for February and May to look at the job description changes so that we would not be facing this at this time. You know, and I just believe that it's kind of out of order because it just follows after somebody else made a change. Do we just change our job description so that we can move to another pay grade or we can receive additional funds? I would, I would question that. And I'm through.
Okay. Ms. LaFlore, anything additional?
I don't think so, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion? Hearing none, no action. Sir?
Are we moving on or?
Are you making a motion?
I am.
Okay, and the motion, you're the first?
I move that we take action to award certificate pay for criminal deputy district clerk.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, there's no motion. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Move to agenda item number 11. Elections Administrator Lucy Abada. Consider and take action to approve the early ballot board members for 2019 through 2021. See attachment number 11.
Good morning, guys. So I have a new attachment for you guys. We had some changes. Our elections, our early voting ballot board has to be approved on a two-year basis. So this will be set up from now. So this will be set up from now until September 30. And the date is at the bottom. It does require everyone's signature. So we have five individuals listed. These are the same individuals that have actually been serving on our EVBB for the last two elections. But we do not have a signed record on file. So we need to get that done before the next election, which is November 35.
And have all five of these people been contacted and they're in agreement to work this position?
Yes.
And they know it's a two-year position?
They are aware of it. We do have their pay approved. They've been through one set of training. They will go through training this afternoon, once you guys approve. They're required to go through training at each election, but we don't have on record that they've actually been through training this year. So in order to make everything equal out with this approval, they'll have to go through training this afternoon, and that's at 1:00.
And the early ballot, they do the ballot by mail?
Yes.
Absentee?
And any limited ballots, any provisional?
The ones that oversee the justification of the provisional ballot?
Yes, yes, sir. These people will actually handle, so our machines are brought in, they'll pull our voting, our tabulation cards, the MBBS. They'll pull them for us. They will make sure everything's okay, hand it to our tabulation clerk, and then go from there. So actually, I don't touch it at all. So, actually, I don't touch it at all during election night. They'll handle the gist of it. And you always want an odd number, of course, for voting purposes. You'll have one judge and an alternate judge, and then you'll have your three clerks. And we do have backup names, just in case something happens and someone can't, can't come, or something happens, somebody gets hit by a bus, you know, it could happen. But what we'll do is, if that happens, we will have to call an emergency meeting and have you guys approve that. But right now, we're good to go, and like I said, they circulate all of the problem.
The minimum for the board is five persons, is that correct?
Yes.
And is there a maximum?
You can have seven typically, so the policy's really vague on that. You can have three, but the state doesn't like that. They usually like five to seven. It's usually the most comfortable, because let's say we do have to do a hand tally, you'll need at least a minimum of three people doing that hand tally, so that would tie up 100% of your board, and you don't want that during election.
Can I make the motion that we approve the early ballot board members for 2019, 2021?
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion?
Can those things be released to the public?
David, yes, certainly. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys, for your help.
Do you need this back? It's got your signature on it?
Yes, so everyone in your copies will have my signature, but I'll just need one back from all of you guys.
Here we go. Is it black hot off the front? Very good, okay. We go to agenda item number 12. Grimes County Attorney John C. Foltz, consider and take action to amend lease agreement between Grimes County and Grimes County Animal Rescue to change the animal shelter location. See attachment number 12.
Judges and Commissioners, this is listed beside my name because I was asked to prepare the amendment. You have the amendment text, as well as the area with the diagram, or the proposed location of the animal shelter. Originally, they had proposed, and this information is from Phil Brunz, who is on that committee with Commissioner Dobianski. He contacted me to advise that the committee had decided to change the location.
She's setting the mood for you.
Sorry, John. I didn't mean to do that.
I thought my lights were going out. So, he's speeding up. Okay, Mom, I'll be in in a second. Anyway, so, the original location was somewhere back near the gun range, and they had concerns about shelter being too close to that. And also, they had some concerns about not being visible. I think the idea is that they may get more business, more adoptions, if you will, if they're more visible. So, the location you see is to the north, or as you're on the county, on the foreign market road, it would be behind the fire station. So, if you're looking at the diagram that you have, the bottom right would be the fire station, then to the left, you see the diagram, the proposed location, which would have access off of Hill Street. I talked to the sheriff today, he indicated that he was okay with that location. I would suggest, though, that if you approve this, maybe you approve it on the condition that that area is staked, and that the sheriff has final sign-off for it, because obviously it's gonna impact his operations. He said he's okay with cutting off that road. He doesn't like that road from Hill Street over to his primary road to the back there. But there's some various things, dumpsters and Conex containers that are gonna have to be moved. He said to me that he was fine with that. Anyhow, so they, the animal rescue committee, I don't know, I assume they, I can't remember if they got their, you got your 501(c)(3) already or not, David?
Yes.
But they came to me through Mr. Brunz and asked that I prepare this amendment, and I advised them that we'd prepare the amendment and put it on the agenda. And so, I'm delivering it into your hands.
And if I may, we had animal shelter planners of the mayor could come in and do a study with us on the placement of the facility, and one of the things that they mentioned was, this is actually a retail position. When you put in an animal shelter, you need to move those dogs as quickly as you can. If we put it in the back, back there, the access, access will be harder to get to, and also even want it visible up there at the front, closer to the jail. Also, that's more convenient for the sheriff's department to oversee the workers from the jail that are working with the animals, that are closer to the jail. The sheriff came out and met with us today that we did this. We will also have Stephen Wisniewski survey this block. Once this is approved, we'll bring it back to the court with the survey before that move.
Is this the district tax office here?
This is the fire station.
Fire station. Okay, this is the fire station in Anderson City.
This is the fire station. Yeah, it's the district tax office. These are the Conexes. It's gonna go right in here.
That's the fire station.
I thought this, this is the fire station, so it's gonna go, this is the new layout for it?
Yeah.
And the parking area?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. What happened to big pictures?
We have some coming.
Is there a motion?
I move that we take action to amend the agreement between Grimes County and Grimes County Animal Rescue to change the animal shelter location.
Second. Does it include the...
Yeah, with, I think Commissioner Dobianski indicated that it was on the condition that this is approximate, and it'll be finalized later by survey?
Yes.
If that's okay, I'd like to add that to the motion.
Okay, fine. Is there a second? Is there further discussion? Any idea how close we're getting? Because I get that question quite a bit.
We have hired someone to do some fundraising for us, and working on some materials. I said we have some big pictures coming. They are coming, some posters and so forth, so we're getting there.
Is there any further discussion? There's a motion before the court on, by Commissioner Dobianski, second by Commissioner Cox. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. Commissioner Precinct Two, Commissioner Dobianski, agenda item number 13, discuss and take action on mass gathering permit application, right-of-way permit application, right-of-way permit order, and right-of-way parade permit application for Grimes County. See attachment number 13.
This is a discussion from our previous discussion on the mass gathering permit because of the incident that happened on August the 31st of this year out on County Road 222, 149, 2819, and 1774. You all heard from Sergeant Wilson from the Texas Department of Public Safety. After several meetings with the sheriff's office, the county judge, myself, and several other members, we have asked the county attorney to put this together, and he's used the, I think, the Washington County template to put this together. And we're asking that this be approved, so we can get a handle on what's happening with these situations in the county.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this a requirement, state requirement, that all counties have a mass gathering permit?
It's a, yeah, it's a state law. It's not, you all are approving the form of the permit, but it's already the law. And so, you're facilitating the law. Now, that's with regard to mass gathering. That's not with regard to the procession of the parade permit. That is not a specific law. There is provision in the Transportation Code that permits counties to regulate what occurs on roads within the county. You have general jurisdiction over those roads, and so that's the basis for the other two permits.
Okay. Well, I was listening to Commissioner Dobianski, and I just wanted to, you to explain that this is all part of law, as it is, and we're just signing into law really what Grimes County should and should have going on on its roadways, and the permits are for everybody, not because of any specific thing. That might have sparked that we didn't have it, but it should be applicable to everybody across the board. My question, I guess that maybe I had for it, I saw that a lot of the counties, and I'm not sure what our process is, I try to understand the permit. Are they coming before the judge just to, when they enter their permits, do they then come before a hearing before the judge, or is it before Commissioner's Court?
The two that are provided by statute are mass gathering and outdoor concert. Outdoor concert is before the entire court. The mass gathering is a permit that's issued only by the judge.
Okay.
But the judge could say, there's no prohibition on the judge saying, "I want the court to have input on this." Most of what is done, using the model of Washington County, most of what will be done pursuant to your permit will be done by Emergency Management Services Coordinator, that new position that was recently created. That's the person they use over there to be the hub of this permit, and to be sure they check to find whether or not EMS is lined up, security is lined up, any of the concerns that...
Health and safety.
Right, any of those concerns. Obviously, you wouldn't want to have the responsibility that in the hands of five different folks, because as you know, when everybody's in charge, nobody's in charge. So, if you have one person that oversees it, that person then can report either to the county judge, he is subordinate, directly subordinate to the county judge as it stands, but you could also say, as a court, you want to have that person report to you all, so you're aware of what's going on. That would be something that you could work out as a policy, but by law, the requirement is to get the permit from the judge.
Well, on page 16, it has Grimes County Commissioner's Court action, and it's on this day, the Grimes County Commissioner's Court hereby voted to approve or deny, so...
Which permit are you looking at?
The mass gathering.
Okay. Yeah, that's, and that's exactly right, and that's because they've chosen to make that additional step. It's not required by law.
And it would be my intent to bring it before the court, simply because you might know something particular in your precinct that I'm not aware of, where everything, all the blanks are filled in, based on the knowledge that I have of what was presented to the EMSC. There still might be some extenuating circumstances, so I would want to bring this before the court, so we're all involved, we all know. Plus, by bringing it before the court, it's gonna get the public aware of what's going on, so they can be prepared, along with the sheriff's office, fire departments, and so forth.
And that's what, I just wanted clarity on that. I was seeing that the court had the ability to deny or approve, but in reading all of the other ones, it was either the judge or the sheriff's office. So, I just wanted to be clear, as on the mass gathering, it's signed by the county judge, but it comes before Commissioner's Court.
That's the permit that you all are considering, that's correct. It's not required by law.
And then the other, the right-of-way, is that a Commissioner's Court, or that's county Same thing?
Yeah, I believe it has the same approval.
It has the, for the right-of-way permit... Wouldn't Texas out have to be involved in that also? Well, that's part, the question is, would Texas not be involved? And that's part of the process of getting that okayed, but a lot of that ownership goes upon those that are requesting the permit. And again, it would still go through the MSC, because he would be the coordinator, or she would be, that person would be the coordinator for all of these activities. But there is a sign-off for the sheriff's office, because they're gonna have to make sure that they have staff available to handle, or as part of the permit, they're gonna have to hire additional staff for that.
And Commissioner, to answer your question, yes, there's a provision for the Commissioner's Court to approve the procession permit, and to get the parade permit, you have to have the procession permit, or, yes, you have to have the right-of-way parade permit application form filled out, which, you see that on... I don't see that there's an action on the admission. Let's see. That's the county judge.
John, which one are you looking at, the right-of-way?
No, I was looking at the parade permit. She was asking, the right-of-way, the procession does require for Commissioner's Court action, the permit has to...
Page 13, is that what you're looking for?
No, I was, I was looking at page 16 of that, I think the second form. I was looking at the parade permit. The one that's two pages long, three pages long, in between the two.
It has Commissioner's Court right on the emergency management.
Right.
Approval at the top, didn't it say, "on this day"?
Yes, you're right.
And on 13, it also has for the parade.
And also to Commissioner Dobianski, to your point, it says, "written commission from Texas Department of Transportation if applicable."
Yeah. Because if they just stay on a county road, then, and something like this is not gonna affect Navasota's Fourth of July Day Parade, because that's Navasota, that's within their city limits, that's their business. Or Todd Mission. Or Todd Mission, or any of the other cities.
Anderson.
Iola, any of them, that hold it within their city limits. This is not to take away their authority. This is for outside city limits within the limits of Grimes County.
Now, this is for unincorporated areas.
Yes.
If they're incorporated, then they go be, whatever the city's policy is. I do have one other question.
Okay.
What about ETJs? If our fairgrounds sit in an ETJ?
Typically, cities don't have the ability to regulate in their ETJs unless specifically set out by statute. ETJ is to indicate the area of land that they could annex. I understand that may have been changed with the recent, with recent legislation, but for instance, you're aware of subdivision regulations. We can enter, we're required to enter an agreement with the city to indicate who's gonna be responsible for subdivision regulations within their ETJ. But other than that, it's the county that would have the ability to regulate outside the corporate boundaries of the municipality.
Does this affect FM or state highway?
The, Washington County's resolution is based upon the general authority given to Commissioner's Court to regulate roads within the county.
Within?
Roads within the incorporated area of the county. That's correct. Regardless of whether it's foreign market, state highway, or county roads. That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Sergeant Wilson, do you have any comments in regards to what we're talking about? Because you, you were kind of a subject matter expert in our initial meetings as we were discussing this, and yes, I do mean to put you on the spot.
Not, not really. The only thing I would say is that, yes, this will be something for all, all functions, all events. So, you're not targeting, or feel like you're targeting, a particular type of event. And it's within the county. So, the thing of it is, is that gives our law enforcement, because he is definitely going to notify us that, hey, this particular event is going to be happening in the county. That gives law enforcement, EMS, and the fire department a heads-up that this situation is going on, this event's going on. And if something goes wrong, happens, or what have you, we're not totally oblivious and about... and about the fact that the event is in the county. Not only that, that gives law enforcement also the opportunity to be able to go out and patrol in the area. And we all know, if you see law enforcement in that area, what you going to do? You're going to be on your p's and q's. Point, point taken right there. So that's, that's basically, we just want to make sure there's good fun as well as order at the same time.
And everybody's safe, the people participating, and those that are around.
Exactly.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Mr. Lieutenant?
Yes, sir.
Question, and I know you haven't talked about this, I don't know if this is for a later Commissioner's Court to resume, to determine this or not, but I haven't heard any discussion. Are these going to be fee permits or no fee?
There, there are some fees stipulated within the permits.
The right-of-way parade application fee is a hundred and the...
Each are a hundred, I believe.
The application fee? You say permit application fee a hundred? You say each?
I believe each one is a hundred dollars.
Okay, because I didn't see the one on the first one. I looked for it last night.
I just marked it earlier.
Oh, you just...
But we were going to keep that at a hundred, just to keep it consistent regardless of what permit you're trying to achieve, so there's not confusion.
It's on page 13 on the...
Page 13?
Correct, Judge.
Okay, so it's a hundred for all, any of them?
Yes, ma'am. It's on page 10 of the other.
And we didn't feel the hundred dollars was unreasonable if you're going to have any size of a group.
Now, this is effective if it should be voted today, starting today.
Correct. I mean, you could delay its effectiveness, but one would suggest that you can't make it retroactive.
No.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Would the court be willing to waive the hundred-dollar fee under certain circumstances?
I, I think the court could always take it into consideration. And maybe that, when it comes before the approval of Commissioner's Court, that might be an option that we could exercise. Do you see anything? Of course, we have to be careful who we pick and choose.
Well, that's the issue with equal protection, due process. You're always going to have to treat people equally. If there was some indigency claim, you'd want to be able to consider it. But when you're talking about a procession of over 25 people, or you're talking about a mass gathering of over 500 people, if there's alcohol and minors, or 2,500, one would think that there's an ability to pay in those circumstances. But you can't foresee every circumstance.
Sure. And it might have something to do with profit, nonprofit.
Yeah, I mean, from what I understand, I mean, even the Grimes County Fair would have to give one of these mass gathering permits.
Yes. That is correct, yeah.
They would have to have it, yes. We have to get them for them, Young Texas, too.
Yeah. And so there, there are certain things that I would consider waiving the fee for, over others. I mean, that's just me personally.
Sure. A good point. Is there any further discussion on Agenda Item Number 13? Is there a motion?
If there's none, I move that we take action to approve the mass gathering permit application, right-of-way permit application, right-of-way permit order, and right-of-way parade permit application for Grimes County.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 13 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I do want to thank the county attorney's office for their work and assistance, particularly Ms. Corey.
I knew who you were talking about.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Credit where credit's due, sir.
Thank you.
Always, always.
Agenda Item Number 15, Consideration and Possible Action to Award a Contract for Construction of the New Maintenance Barn on FM 2445.
Did we skip one?
Who does skip?
Kenzie's subdivision.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator David Lilly, Commissioner's, Commissioner Precinct One Chad Mallett reviewing and approving final plat of Kenzie subdivision. Mr. Lilly.
Commissioners, Judge, as you all know, I brought this before you at the last Commissioner's Court for review and approval, and the court chose to treat the first round as a preliminary plat and have me bring it back for a subsequent review and approval as a final plat. There were no changes that needed to be made on the plat, with the exception of the plat had not been signed by the owner. It is signed now, and it is notarized, so everything is documented on the plat. And I had nothing more to add from what we discussed last. Again, this plat is basically what I use the term, it's not a legal term, but I call it a simple plat, where there's no, it's only a small number of lots that are being divided out, and there's no access being created. All the lots have direct access onto County Road 127.
What is the county road?
127.
127.
If there's no further discussion, I move to approve the final plat for Kenzie subdivision.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 14 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. With the court's permission, I'd like to bring Agenda Item Number 19 before you at this time. Agenda Item Number 19, if there's no, no issues, is consider and take action to approve the Economic Development Services Agreement between Grimes County and Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce for the 2019 to 2020 fiscal year, October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, and authorize the county judge's signatory attachment number 19. It's just a renewal of what we've been doing, commissioners.
And I'd like to say, Mr., is Johnny still here?
He is.
Okay. I'd like to say thank you, Johnny. You've done an outstanding job of helping Grimes County in this process and responding to requests for information from the various entities that would like to develop here within Grimes County. You've developed a website that's very informative, one location that a person can go to and find, find land that's possibly for sale to do business within Grimes County. And I think that as we grow, or as we change and develop, that having that one contact person is vital to us. So I really appreciate all the work that you put in, and all the questions that you hit me with, and made me think also, so. If there are no questions, then I would like to make the motion that we approve the Economic Development Services Agreements between Grimes County and the Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, and authorize the county judge's signature.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 19 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, sir.
We will now go back to the order of the agenda, Agenda Item Number 15, Roden Bridge Engineer Harry Walker. Mr. Walker is on vacation, elected not to take any of us with him. But Agenda Item Number 15, Consideration and Possible Action to Award a Contract for the Construction of the New Maintenance Barn on FM 2445. That would be our attachment number 15. They did get the bids in, and I believe, what was it, five or six responses? Seven responses? And you're going to...
Yeah, if I may comment on that. Mr. Walker looked, looked at the bids. I was here for the opening of these. He had contacted each of the individuals that had bid on the project. The low bid of $398,800, $398,800 was put in by a company who had only actually done one building of this approximate size. After speaking with Mr. Harry, he felt like he had maybe had bid a little bit too low on the project. And so we went, he recommended that we go with the second company, Champco Incorporated, for $492,200. And do we have a representative here? Yes. If you have any questions, just direct them at him at this time.
I'll just add to that. I also spoke with Mr. Walker regarding the project, and he did have some concerns about the low bidder not being totally qualified, and even their bid being probably not where it should have been.
He, that contractor mostly did residential construction rather than commercial buildings.
Now, now Champco is $492,492,200, and the high bid was $695,000. So you guys are going to be able to do a really professional, good job for your bid?
Yes, sir. We knew going into this, I'm a graduate of Navasota High School last night, and I've been busy working a lot outside of Grimes County. And so I came into this knowing that we would leave some off the table, just to try and get, try to personally get my name coming back into the area and be more involved back in Grimes County. So we, you can speak with Patty, but I know Harry himself, we gave him a list of references for projects we've done all over the, all over Texas, even outside of Texas. If you want any more recommendations from the bank on our financial capability, we can provide those. Yes, I know, I knew going in that I would be a little aggressive on the number.
Paying back to the community a little bit?
Yes, sir.
We're going to build a courthouse, you want to leave $5 million?
And Harry said he did check the references on the... Very good reviews.
So with that, Commissioner Cox or Commissioner Dobianski, is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we award the contract for construction of the new maintenance barn on FM 7, 2445, excuse me, to Champco, in the amount of $492,200.
Second.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Dobianski on Agenda Item Number 15, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussions? Just real quickly, when would you be able to start this project?
I'll be getting touch on the home as soon as there's a notice to proceed.
And do you have an idea of how long it would take you to do it?
I'll get a schedule, Mr. Harry, if you're in your office. But this is approximately, we're coming into winter time, so I'd give us, you know, probably about eight months, but hopefully sooner than that. Some of it's weather dependent coming into the winter.
Well, you can always count on the weather in Grimes County. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations. Commissioner Dobianski put the first, and Commissioner Cox, did I not read that? Commissioner Cox did the second? Okay. Agenda Item Number 16, Consideration and Possible Action to Award a Contract for the Construction of the Bridge on CR County Road 202, under the 2015 GLO, General Land Office Contract, see attachment number 16. All right.
Yeah, we had a bid opening on September 17. We received four bids. Low bid was with Hookwood Construction of Navasota, and their bid was $573,410. We checked the references, checked all the, they had a completed package, and we recommended awarding the contract to them.
And who was that again?
I'm probably saying it wrong, but...
That was my first time hearing that. Josh, you're with us.
And that's a county contractor, so that's nice to have.
Yes. Y'all work with them before the...
We have indeed.
They actually did another bridge there on 202.
Are there any other questions here? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the award, the action to award the contract for construction of the bridge on County Road 202, under the 2015 GLO contract to Fuqua Construction Company.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 16 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 17, Consideration and Possible Action on the Sale of FM 2445 Property, see attachment number 17. Ms. Patty, do you want to update us on that, please?
Yes, sir.
I, I...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Harry, it has me to do that.
That's right. I'm sorry. As you were, Commissioner.
Okay. We, last Tuesday, I think it was, we opened the bids, or Wednesday, last Wednesday, I believe it was. We had, we received one bid on the property, and the bid was for... $316,000. And Mr. Harry recommended that we go ahead and accept that bid. That is for the house and the property that was listed. We only had one bid, and the story of this, they saw the property the day before, wasn't even where that it was for sale, and bid on it the next day.
They're actually here as well.
Yeah.
And that's Industry Tractor and Equipment LLC?
Yes. If, if you have any questions, if y'all, one of you want to come up and answer the questions about...
Basically, I'm with Mr. Tractor and Equipment, Kevin Hudson.
Sir, can I get you here by the podium, so the microphone will pick up your voice? And you're broadcasting to the world around, so don't be nervous.
We're live. So we've been at this Industry Tractor Equipment. I've got two partners in another business with Max HDD. We're a directional drilling business, and we've been looking for a place to relocate our business to, out of Houston. Grimes County is kind of a centralized location. I live in, you know, South Brown. Travis Fander, one of my partners, he lives in Montgomery, Woodlands area. TJ, he lives in, over in Cold Springs. So this was kind of, and many of our employees live in the Montgomery area. Right now, we office in Houston. We work all over the U.S. So we're just looking for a place to store some equipment, you know, build a maintenance facility, offices, the whole deal.
Okay. That's an easy access piece of property with 2445, 1774.
It's a good location. Only thing we're having issues with right now, is I think y'all have all the internet tied up out there?
It's coming.
We're working on that.
Can y'all enlighten us a little bit on that? Because we've been...
See me after court, and I'll talk about that.
Yeah, it's, it's been a, we've been working on it for about a week now. Just trying to figure out. Communication's a key, a key thing for us.
We've got good news for you. You might even want to up your offer when we hear it.
Y'all have any questions for us? We're excited to be over here in Grimes County.
And just to be clear, you're going to keep it with the base, the existing base, to remain in place?
Yes, ma'am. That was our main, that we've been looking over here for probably a couple of years now, off and on, just, you know, knowing this is the area we want to be in, you know, just because it's centralized, and what we do.
Traffic's going to be a lot easier.
I'm applauding about that, actually. Another question I have for y'all, and you can probably answer. I assume we're precinct two?
You are.
Okay. I'd like to see the plans, you know, we'd like to see the plans that y'all are for your maintenance facility, just to make sure we're not building something that doesn't mesh with it in that area. Y'all not sure what y'all are putting up there?
That's a fair request. And Patty, Armus here works in Roden Bridge, and do you know where that facility is?
No, sir.
It's just across, you're just across 90?
Yes, sir.
And the first building there to your left.
Okay.
So, and they'd be glad to share with you and talk with you.
Okay. Just like to see something makes good.
Makes perfect sense.
We're not building ours, and y'all are building apples.
Very good.
And that's 10.2 acres on FM 2445, and the bid amount was 316.
316.
And just to point out, I don't know if you mentioned it, but the phrase value was 200,000.
And we spent, just to give the public an idea, we spent 400,000, approximately 409,000, I think, on purchasing the property. We recovered about $75,000 worth of base off of that portion that we're selling. So if we get 319,000, we've got a pretty good deal on the nine acres that we're keeping.
This is 316.
Is that a motion, sir?
Yes.
And your mo, did you repeat your motion, please?
Yes. I move that we, I move that we approve the sale of the property on FM 2445 to Industry Tractor and Equipment LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 17 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. So we were setting up another LLC, is it okay if we change the purchaser's name, just sort of do a second title transfer?
It's fine, sure, it's fine. I'm gonna draft the contract, Judge, and you can do a modification after the award. Just changing, not changing the terms per se, we're just changing the name of the...
Changing the name, just, we're gonna have it under our, under our company that we own, instead of me doing it, so, and I'll be able to get you all that information, give me your contact.
Thank you.
Hearing that, are there any other questions for the court? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Welcome to Grimes County.
Thank you.
Glad to have you on.
No loud music after 10:00 P.M.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 18, consideration and possible action to award annual contracts as follows. Number one, flexible base. Number two, tree trimming. Number three, bridge construction, bridge construction labor. Number four, contract mowing. Five, culverts. Six, fuel. Seven, contract hauling. Attachment Number 18. No wonder Harry went on vacation. Ms. Patty?
Judge, Mr. Harry sent each of you letters of recommendations for each of the contracts. We did bid comparisons for all the different contracts, and you can see he's comfortable in awarding all those contracts.
Mr. Foltz, are you okay with us taking these all at one time as one agenda item, or would you prefer us to take them one at a time as it listed?
Probably better if you have a discussion on each one, because you may have commissioners that disagree, and you may have a different vote on each one.
All right, sir. Good advice, and thank you. So with that, we will look at the flexible base, which is the first on our agenda. I don't know if these are coordinated in the order that our agenda is. I think it is. Lime, they are? Good, thank you. So the recommendation... The contract be awarded to Frost Crushed Stone Inc. for the type A grade five flexible base, and the price is 650 per cubic yard. That's out of costly?
Yes, sir.
And Connors Crestone for type A, grade one, two flex space.
So you have two different grades that were taken bids, is that correct?
I move to award type A grade five flex space to Frost Crushed Stone Inc. for 650 per cubic yard, and type A grade one, two flex space to Connors Crushed Stone for $7.25 per cubic yard.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18, Item Number One, Flexible Base by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The second item on the Agenda Number 18 is number two, tree trimming.
We had two bids come in on that, and Mr. Walker was comfortable recommending Flora's Tree Service. They've been our tree trimming removal service that we've used in the past.
So they already know our county and our operation and things of that sort?
And it was 125 an hour. The other bid was 150.
And I included the specs, if y'all had any questions on what that...
I make the motion that we move to approve the tree trimming contract to Flora's Tree Trimming, Tree Services.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item 18, Item Number Two, by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, to approve Flora's as the vendor for that contract. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Those that are keeping minutes for the court, if you, if I'm not clear on any of them, or you have a question, please ask me to repeat myself. Agenda Item 18, Item Number Three, Bridge Construction.
We had one bid, Neeland Bridge Construction. The proposed rate is $250 per hour. That does include floor workers and employment.
And Neeland has done quite a good work personally.
We have, yes, sir. It's been so long.
Is there a motion on Agenda Item 18, Item Number Three?
I make the motion we award the bridge construction contract, bridge construction labor contract to Neeland Bridge Construction.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18, Item Number Three, Bridge Construction Labor by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is it to Neil, Neeland? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. We'll now go to Agenda Item Number 18, Number Four, Contract Mowing.
We had four bidders this year. We added several miles, hundred miles of roads to this contract, so it did increase quite a bit. We do have it broken out into sections. As you can see, some people bid one location, some people bid all three.
What is the preference of Roden Bridge?
The preference of Roden Bridge is Wayne Pool LLC. He is the low bidder on all locations.
What's, what is it again?
Wayne Pool LLC.
I said number four on the list.
Yes, ma'am.
But they're gonna do all areas of the county?
Yes, sir.
And we've worked with them before?
We have. He did, he was our mower this past year.
And undoubtedly, we were satisfied with that.
Yes, sir.
Now, is this a one, how often are they mowing? I know your miles increased to 110 miles.
It's a two cycle.
Two cycle?
Yes, ma'am, weather permitting. You have to be careful not to mow the wildflowers down, so it has to come after all the wildflowers die, and then we just finished up now, so weather permitting, it's generally sometime in the spring and then sometime in the summer.
So we had two people, just to be clear, that bid on all locations, but we had two more that bid on specific locations.
Yes, we should have a sheet. We had Triple B Ag, they bid location A and location C. Jimmy Shimshack bid location B only. MHB bid all three locations, and Wayne Pool bid all three locations.
I move to award contract mowing to Wayne Pool LLC for locations A, B, and C.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item 18, Item Number Four, Contract Mowing by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, and that's to Pool. All in favor, is there further discussion? Sorry. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 18, Item Number Five is Culverts.
We received two bids for Culverts Wilson, Culverts as well as Preferred Pipe Distributors. Preferred Pipe Distributor only bid the HDPE pipe, and we do not use the HDP pipe for the roadway Culverts. So Wilson Culverts is the lowest bid for the...
Lowest and only qualifying bid?
Yes, sir.
Have we used Wilson before?
Yes, sir. We use him.
I make the motion that we approve Wilson Culverts as the Culvert, for the Culvert contract.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18, Item Number Five, Culverts by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox, and that is to Wilson. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 18, Number Six, Fuel, and that's gas and diesel?
Yes, sir. It's the plus gas as well that the Sheriff's Department uses, so it's the regular gas, the plus gas, and the diesel.
I'm glad we go to electric vehicles.
And that's the only one, you only receive one bid?
One bid, yes, ma'am, from Culverts.
There's a number 283,384.40. Is there a motion?
Judge, I move that we approve the contract for fuel, gas, or gas and diesel to be awarded to Culverts Petroleum.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18, Item Number Six, Fuel by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski to go to Culverts. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 18, Last Item Number Seven, Contract Hauling.
We had four contractors bid this, the different hauling locations. We are requesting that we award two contracts. Glenn Fuquay was the low bidder on the longer mile hauls, and Matt Transportation was the bidder for the shorter mile hauls. The spreadsheets that we gave to you show the material cost as well as the transportation cost, or what it would, what it's gonna cost to deliver per ton to our maintenance facilities.
So the, once again, the recommendation is Matt Transportation for the short haul, Lynn Fuquay Incorporated for the long haul?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
I make the motion that we award the contract hauling for the long mileage group to Glenn Fuquay and to Matt Transportation LLC for the short mileage group.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18, Item Number Seven, Hauling. The long haul goes to Fuquay, short hauling goes to Matt. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Just put them to Agenda Item. Thank you, Patty. Roden Bridge Report?
Do y'all have any questions?
I'd just like to make the observation of the Roden Bridge Report that's printed on the agenda, six employees completed advanced motor grader training offered by the University of Texas in Arlington.
That's advanced motor grader training.
Yes, sir.
They get a certificate?
They do.
Okay.
And we have grade all training coming up as well, that's already scheduled for current employees as well as potential employees if the budget gets adopted for the new training.
So was that the complete Roden Bridge Report?
This is, yes, ma'am. Do you need it?
No. He read one.
Yeah, I think he just wanted to note that.
Okay.
That that was in there.
It was a nice accomplishment.
Yes, sir.
And they come to us?
They do, free of charge. Right now, the University of Texas at Arlington has the contract that allows us to get this certificate training for free. So they actually come to our location and do the training for several days with our employees.
I have them charged if we send them to Teaks or anything.
Yes, sir. Teaks, Teaks actually hasn't, they charged right now, they didn't get the contract. So the University of Texas at Arlington has the contract right now. So it is at no cost to the county for this training for these employees.
So we, have we completed our new road for this season?
They are finishing up, yes, ma'am.
Finishing up, and so we're doing, level up now?
Yes, ma'am. They actually are delivering it today?
Today.
And yesterday, and Monday. You might wanna know, Commissioner Walker had some people contact her regarding the Red Oak Pipeline. I think Mr. Harry got with you on that.
Yes, he spoke to me about the Red Oak Pipeline contact... Yes, he spoke to me about the Red Oak Pipeline contacting him, and this is a planned 20-inch crude oil line to be constructed in the southern part of the county by Plains Pipeline and Phillips 66. The alignment of the new pipeline is still being determined.
Right, and they have not submitted an application.
And they have not submitted an application.
No, ma'am.
All right.
This one is proposed to go through the southern part of the county if and when it is approved.
And right now, they were asking the citizens to survey their property. They're looking for a particular...
That was some of the lady's trust.
A particular flower.
They did, please.
Okay. I think you were contacted and I was contacted. So, thank, thank you so much.
They also came in and visited my office, and this is this, it's the same organizational group, but just for our emergency management services, they're also going to have a million-dollar grant that they'll be providing, or letting the fire departments and EMS and emergency services apply for $10,000 grants for individual departments, again. So, it'll be the second time around for that offer. It's pretty good.
Well, the concern we had, or we received was from citizens not wanting another pipeline running through their property. So, while we appreciate, in case they do come, that offer, but we're hoping and praying that we won't have to experience another pipeline.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Patty. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 20, since we pulled 19 up early. Agenda Item Number 20, Consider the Proposed Budget for FY 2019-20 and take action to adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Code 111.008. In other words, we will vote on this individually, yea or nay. We have a fresh, hard copy in front of us. Jessie or Mary, is there anything that you wanna point out to myself or the commissioners?
There are a few things that I would like to point out. Going to the new software that we're going to, we felt that it would be easier as far as when Lucy has to get her new employees into the system if we didn't have 180 different employment codes. And so, we reduced those down to about, I think they're probably about 18 or 20 now. We have a cost code for hourly, for salary, for elected officials, for...
Part-time?
Part-time, temporary.
Temporary.
And also, like for the, in the sheriff's office, for the overtime for holidays, and then several other things. And so, we've tweaked the general ledger numbers and have moved those salaries into the specific line item that it needed to go to, to work well with our new system. And then, also on, in Fund 54, which is County Clerk's, one of her funds for vital statistic records, she had, she spent a little over $200,000 more in 2019 than what she had budgeted for. And I had emailed her last week, on Wednesday, asking her if that was the expense that she had budgeted for this next year. I had not had a response from her. So, looking at what she had left available in her fund, I reduced her budgeted amount from the 200 and something thousand to, she had 9,000 something left after all of her expenses and income for this year. And so, I reduced it down to what her income will be next year, plus the 9,000.
I think I understand that. I thought we approved earlier in the process for her to get that record.
Well, and I think, and that's what I'm saying. I think she did, that she got done this in 19, what she was planning on doing in 20.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I think so.
That's, that's what I think happened.
I can't swear to it.
She had budgeted $127,000 for expenses for 2019, but she actually spent $232,000. No, I'm sorry, she actually spent $339,000.
Right.
And...
Because we'd already covered that, yeah.
Yeah, Jessie, it's no shoes. Oh, she hasn't changed it yet.
So, does that affect the $28,810,000 number? No, we'll just put it into a different account?
No, because that's money that she, right, we're still gonna have to change it on here. I thought I changed it in the system.
It will affect her bottom line number, but it was, anything over the revenue was coming from fund balance anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you'll be okay. It'll just affect that with the change.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, the numbers will remain the same?
Your bottom line number will change when she changes that, Margaret's management, but you will not have to come up with any more money or have more money to spend because it should've been coming from fund balance. So, your fund balance will change as well.
Did we discuss, has everybody had an opportunity to know what changes were made since the last meeting?
So, since the last meeting, there have been a few changes. Roden Bridge is, since they are taking over the subdivision duties, we have taken, removed the advertisement line from 408 and placed it into Fund 20.
So, we added an advertising line, or do they already have one?
We added an advertisement line, but the money part was just transferred from the DMC to Roden Bridge. As well as the revenue that we received for those, that was moved from Fund 10 to Fund 20.
It was moved to Fund 20?
And that's the, that's the plat permit fee.
Another change that, another change that was made was for the Historical Commission, Fund 37. A line item for travel and conference was added to that fund. And that was for him, or for the educational conference. It is going to be $5,096. So, we added that.
That's to send nine Historical Commission members to training in Austin with the Historical Commission. And I believe it's, it's two nights and three days, two to three days training. And Al feels like that this, he's got a good group on this committee now, and he feels like this will get them better equipped to help continue to build the commission and to get the artifacts together instead of them being scattered all over the town.
And this was money that was already earmarked somewhere else?
It was in capital projects.
And it's coming into the capital?
Yes, so, we reduced capital projects by the $5,096, and we placed it into the Fund 37, yes, ma'am.
But it had been already, previously coming in, right, from the Historical Committee, the Central Commission?
I say it again, I'm sorry.
Did I understand you that this money had already been coming in?
Now, this we took out of the balance.
So, how, what we discussed was Historical Commission had their own account. They came to the county asking them to keep up with their books. They deposited a $6,000 check. And so, they're asking the county to pay for this conference because otherwise, it would utilize all of their funds, it would use their funds, their $6,000. So, the county is paying for it. We reduced capital projects, Fund 49, and we increased Fund 37.
And those are the changes since the last?
Another change, yes.
Okay.
Another change will be the senior mills. We prepare in advance, we work with BBCOG and prepare our budget for the senior mills. The office manager is partially funded by the grant, and the other part is county-funded. When preparing that budget, we placed in there a 3% increase because that was what was talked about at the beginning a little bit. We have reduced that down to the two and a half to match what the county has placed into the budget.
So, that was a reduction?
Yes, sir.
Web serps?
That was, we've already talked about that at the last one.
Okay. What about DASL?
And we talked about that at the last one as well.
All right. It was just added into this one because we didn't have it in the other?
Yes, yes, but it was approved at the last meeting to go ahead and change those.
I've got a question on, just glancing at the fairgrounds, 465?
I want to, I've been working on this for almost a year, getting all the departments in the 400 numbers instead of all over the place. So, I did change account numbers for Fund 34, Fund 36, Fund 86. I think those are the only ones that have payroll. But any of the funds that had, I tried to make them, if they were specific, like Fund 86 is our school resource office, but that's handled through the sheriff's office. So, I made that department 451. So, I, what I tried to do was get this all back into the 400s, and I did the same with 911 and got her close to the other two numbers that she, as department head over. And then, just put the, changed that in the fairgrounds.
So, is this a, in that particular account budget, is this an example of where you were making the changes to better fit the programming with regard to salary? And fairground manager has zero?
Right, because the fairground manager is an hourly employee.
Okay. And then, I've got on page 49. And then, there is no hall cleaning expense in there that I see?
We don't budget the expense because it comes out of the deposits that...
Okay, gotcha.
It's someone to wash their deposit, and we pay, correct?
So, do we have a balanced budget?
Yes, sir.
And I guess for the Justice Center, we, before we vote on or approve this budget, we need to appropriate what we do wanna put out of fund balance into the budget. Right now, we have $5 million.
We've already moved that, y'all had approved it back in.
Well, I'm thinking about, we only have $5 million in there right now.
Oh, for the budget itself?
Yes, so, do we, we would have to put what we would wanna appropriate into the budget before we approve it. I mean, it's in fund balance anyway, but it would, it'd be good to have it up front, showing what we have, okay?
So, you want us to make that change?
Yeah, I mean, and looking, I guess, at the new numbers, I think we can get close to our $12 million.
That's only if y'all move more money.
Yes, yes. I mean, you're talking about out of the fund balance?
Because right now, we have 9.1 million in there. And, or if you signed the bill, it was $12,000 or something like that. That'll come out of that. But then, I gave y'all a printout this morning of the fund balances, and so, in the, in the capital projects fund right now, we have the 9.1 million. And I think what he is suggesting is that we take another $2 million and put in there, which would give us 11,1 million.
Or, I mean, if we could, I mean, even discuss possibly, if we put the 12 million, that would still leave us operating fund balance of nine, a little over 9 million.
Five months.
If you put, if you just, if you took 1.984 million and moved it in there, that would give you a five-months operating.
Yeah, just a hair under five, I believe. Well, there's also, what's the available unappropriated, 400?
That is, that is money that is still out in unappropriated areas that could be used.
Oh, okay, so potentially, we could, that would get us even closer to the actual five-month operating.
And then, after, you know, after we close the books, I think we'll have another $100,000 or more that we can get towards.
So, I think we'd be really, really close to that five-month operating if we actually went ahead and put 12 million in the line item for the Justice Center.
I'd feel more comfortable with 11 million. Because if you put 12 million in there, that's gonna take us down to 8.9 million.
Although, I had 9.06.
Do you need this, Jessie?
Well, if you...
Well, she took the 9.06.
That 1.984 in the middle of the, down at the bottom of the, of your sheet, right down here, that's what, that's what a monthly expenditures are.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Well, I just, I basically took the 9.162. That subtracted the 11.905, which was the six-month operating.
How?
Well, no, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I took the 12 million from the nine and figured out that we'd still have, you know, 9.06. Maybe, that's what I did. I did write it down, I tried to do it on the phone. So, if we've actually put 12, it would be, it would be 9.06 as an operating budget. So, Mary, what you're suggesting is, we got the 9162, put into 1984, and that'd give us 11 million. Takes us down to five months operating. Are you with, with us on that, Chad? Yes, that's what I'm saying, but I thought we, if I, what number should I take? I took the 12 million. It's two-point, I guess it'd be, so essentially, if we put 12 million and we have the 9.162, it is essentially 2.8 and change million. You subtract that from the 11.9, which gives us just a hair over $9 million in the, in the operating budget. In the op, I mean, in the operating. And it leaves us a little over 9 million in the undesignedated fund balance if we put 12 million in there.
From the, from the 25, 966?
Yeah.
Less the death, less the restricted?
Well, we have 9.162816. If we subtracted the 12 million, that leaves us, yeah, 2.837 million. If you subtract that from the eight, six months operate, you know, well, I mean, if you subtract that from... What am I trying to do here? Subtract this from 11, 95, 905, 146? Yeah, from the... Yeah, from the 11,905.
But you don't, you wouldn't subtract it from the 11,905.
That's true.
If you, if we were to move 3 million into, in there, where we would have 12.1 million dollars in there, that would leave us with 8.9 million.
Okay, that's what I was saying. 12, you said 12.1. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was, I was right around nine. It would leave us with right around 9 million.
And the 8.9 million would leave us with a little over four, between four to five months operating.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would feel better if we didn't.
Understood.
Take that extra million. I'm, I'm good with the 1.984 million.
So with that, I guess we are to the point on Agenda Item Number 20. Consider the proposed budget for FY 2019, 2020, and take action to adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Code 111.008.
So what was the decision on that?
I, I think we should at least put the 11 million into, into the proposed budget for the New Justice Center. Change it from 5.328 to 11 million.
Change it from what again?
5.328, which is in there, currently in there. It's on page 63. That's what's currently in there. So increase that to 11 million.
What page did you say that was on?
63.
And you want to change it to what?
To 11 million.
You want to do an 11 million even, or do you want that?
I guess whatever would leave our five month operating. Do you have that number? I guess you can get that. My math hasn't been good on this calculator.
Can we poke and look at that number?
I'm sorry. That would leave us, that would leave us 9.9 million in, in fund balance and unappropriated fund balance.
I mean.
Which is five months of operating.
I'm not opposed to, to moving more money into the, the fund for the building if that avoids us going into debt.
Yes.
I mean, the.
If that what?
Avoids us going into debt. The four, five month, I mean, that's a comfort. It's a, it's a risk deal. There's been times, at least from what I understand, that this county has operated with way less money in the bank than, than that. And I've talked to, matter of fact, I've talked to Mr. Walker, not recently, but just when I came on as a commissioner and talked to him about some of the mitigation things that he was doing with regard to the roads at that time. And the subject just coincidentally came up, and I think the most that he's ever had to expend for road repairs due to catastrophe, flooding, whatever, has been about 400 to 500,000 dollars. Obviously, there's grant money involved with repairing some of those roads, but from an emergency standpoint, which is what this should be kept here for, it's not a savings account. I mean, I'm comfortable with less than five months. I don't, you know, somebody said that it's mandatory to have at least three months in there. I've not found that in the law, and nobody can cite that. I think it's probably, it could very well exist, but I think it's more of a best practices type scenario.
I think it's, I think it's beneficial for cash flow and when you actually, you know, get, you know, get, collect the taxes and everything. There's a period of time there where.
Sure. I mean, I, I'm comfortable putting enough in there to get the project done if we, in fact, go that route.
I, I do too. That's why I think we're close to, closer to 9 million. If we kept close to the 9 million, that would give us a, a, over, over four and a half month. I mean, we, we do have a fund balance for Road and Bridge, over 2 million. Well, some of that's probably about to come out with the, with the barn.
And partly just moving the money from one area to another area, the money's still available in the event we did get into a situation. We have the opportunity to move it back out of that into a particular area. I mean, we don't want to be messing with the accounts and moving money here and there and kind of lose track of what we're doing, but Commissioner Cox, I, I go along with, with what you're saying. The idea is that, you know, if, if we can keep from borrowing and we do it because we've got a four month operating amount, I'm not opposed to that. I know our auditor gets nervous when we talk like that, but it, but at the end of the day, the money's still available. And if push comes to shove, we, we have the opportunity to move and adjust.
And I think it's a better use of the taxpayers' money.
I agree.
Instead of having, like you said, going to debt, you know, have to pay interest on that.
I do.
So I'm, I'm for putting 12.
I'm for putting 12.
So before we get into the budget vote, is there a motion then?
Do we need a change? Except, I guess we'd have to do that with the changes.
Mr. Attorney, are we okay to do that at this time?
It's your budget. You, you haven't adopted it yet. You can certainly move to change it, but I would say probably the safest thing is move to approve the budget with the change that you're considering. So when it's time to vote on the budget, say, we move to vote on the budget as presented with the change that you're considering.
So just to be clear, instead of the 1 million, 984, 191, that's a difference of 419,000 between what you're proposing and what you're proposing. Is that correct? You're proposing.
Put 12 million, instead of having five in the, in the New Justice Center, put 12 million.
So you want to move, so instead of the 11, 5, 6, we're talking, do the 12 right there?
Put the 12 million in this, which would, would leave, still leave us a, a operating fund balance in, in unappropriated of, I guess it's close to nine, 8.9 million?
Yeah, it would be between 2.8 and 2.9 that we would actually have in there.
Which, the difference between what you were proposing, that's where I was going with that. What you were proposing and the difference that he's proposing is actually something like 800,000, 852, 991?
Something like that.
Point nine nine? Just so I'm following clearly.
Want y'all to give a shot at a motion?
So we know we're going to.
Any of the other changes that were made? That's, I guess, oh, we haven't addressed those changes as well, or just this, this change?
You'll need to address the Fund 54 change. And you, probably all of them will be best. The few that we discussed other than the 54 are already in the budget that you have.
Okay.
And, but they are changes to the proposed that are online, so it'd probably be best just to discuss all of them.
Do we have a list of all those changes, or can we just state as, as discussed, per Ms. Attorney?
We can quickly do a list really quick, just to, you had the senior mills, reduction in senior mills. You had the 5,096 added to the Historical Commission for Travel and Conferences. That many being taken away from capital projects to cover that expense. You had that advertisement that was moved from EMC to Road and Bridge along with the revenue.
Fund 10 to 20.
This is the one that I put 12 million here instead of this one.
The Fund 54, the records management that Mary discussed.
You can take it away from this number because this is operating expenses, six months worth of.
No, that was the six months.
You can take that. To whatever it is and add to that.
Okay, to be reduced by what she has remaining in her fund balance and plus her revenue that she's received this year, right here. Next year, sorry. And then you have the capital projects fund to be increased to 12 million.
Cause that was three fifths.
Okay. So that's the difference.
28, 37, 103, okay.
You can take that out of this operating and that's what.
And that's what's going to remain.
Well, I move to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 with the adjustments for senior mills, the Historical Commission, the advertisement from EMC to Road and Bridge, Fund 54 for records, and increasing the capital improvements project for the Justice Center to 12 million dollars.
Did you second that, Commissioner?
I did.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 20, as stated by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Now is the time for discussion. Are there any discussion, discussion or questions?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Walker?
Just to be clear, because I'm not looking at the numbers that were presented to me this morning.
Okay.
Just to be clear, so now we're going to be operating with, I mean, what we'll have left is less than the four month?
No, no. Just less than the five month.
Less than the five, okay.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be like 800,000 less than five months.
Which is what I was asked to. So 852, okay, I got it.
So about four and a half months operating, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Dennis, your question, Commissioner?
Yes, and I want to ask the auditors, are they comfortable with the numbers that you've given us?
Yes.
Are you all confident?
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Agenda Item Number 20.
You didn't record vote.
On 20? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And I've got it written down here. Commissioner Mallett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dobianski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
County Judge, votes aye. That would be a 5-0 vote. Thank you. With that, we go to Agenda Item Number 21. Agenda Item Number 1, 21, consider and take action to adopt the tax rate with a record vote for Grimes County for tax year 2019 pursuant to Local Government Code 114.010 as follows. See your attachment 21. And I'm going to read this specifically. "We, the Commissioners Court of Grimes County, do hereby adopt the tax rate for 100 taxable valuation for Grimes County for tax year 2020 as follows. .530261 for the purposes of maintenance and operation, 0.0 for the payment of debt service, 5 point, excuse me, 0.530261 total tax rate." This is a record vote, recorded vote. Commissioner Mallett, how do you vote?
Do we need a motion on that?
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm making a motion. Second.
Prove that statement. Thank you for that. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 21 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Mallett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dobianski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
County Judge, how do you vote?
Aye.
The vote is 5-0. It passes. Going to Agenda Item Number 22, canvass attendance for October 9, 2019, Commissioners Court Regular Meeting and Discuss Followed Possibility of Commissioners Court Special Meeting on October 16. The reason this is on the agenda is because the October 9, Commissioners Court is right in the middle of the annual County Judges' Commissioners Conference that's going to be conducted in Galveston, Texas. So it doesn't really lend itself to come to the meeting and then go back down. I guess you could. But anyway, so Commissioner Mallett, are you attending the conference, or will you be available for Commissioners Court on October 9?
I'll be available for Commissioners Court.
Commissioner Dobianski?
I have not decided yet. I could be.
That's most helpful, Commissioner. Commissioner Walker?
No.
You're not, you're not available. Commissioner Cox?
I'll be available.
You're available. County Judge is not available.
Let's change the meeting date to the 16th, and I will sign up for the conference.
Okay, what is that going to do to Treasurer's Office, and what does that do to the Auditor's Office if we do not have a meeting on the night?
We'll just approve and pay. Pay as we would.
Okay. Okay, all right. So is there, well, I want us not to take action, but.
16th is fine with me.
I'm sorry?
I can meet on the 16th, actually.
Okay. So Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Cox?
I can, yes.
All right, everybody's good for the 16th. That's y'all known. And I won't be here. I'll be at the Leadership Conference in Corpus. So Commissioner Walker will be here, your day in court. So Cherie, will you make public notice on the website and also take care of the other dates? Thank you, Commissioners. Agenda Item Number 23, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize County Judge as signatory. There've been an awful lot of comments back and forth on the internet of, you know, hey, we got rain, let's eliminate the burn ban. But I don't know that we've gotten enough of a distribution throughout the county. I, I, I'm hesitant. We got Chief Vickers. Chief, do you have an opinion?
Well, right now, we're in a transitional period as far as our weather systems are concerned. We've had significant rain in the southern part of the county and in Sarasota. We haven't had as much up in the Beedies area, and that's predominantly associated with the latest weather system that came through.
Sure.
We're looking at rain values throughout the county ranging from about 3/4 of an inch in the Beedies area to over four inches in the Cod Mission area. So if you want, if you want to be able to flush, we don't have enough rain.
What do you mean by flush?
If you want to make, if you want to make the burn ban go away, if you want to flush the burn ban away, you don't have enough rain.
Right.
But you should also consider that you're having a change in the weather patterns. You're fixing to see additional rain, additional temperature decreases coming our way. If you were planting your fall garden, that's down at the first of the month because I think things are definitely going to be. I think things are definitely going to be better. I'm not opposed to lifting it, but I'm also not opposed to extending it for a, for one more cycle.
Mr. Lilly?
The only thing I would add is I'm not aware of any of our neighboring counties that have lifted them yet at this point, so that is also a factor that we need to consider whether, and again, we have to ultimately determine what the needs of our citizens are in the county, but just be aware that our neighbors are surrounding us all still, to my knowledge, have theirs in place.
Well, I looked at the state information that they sent me this morning before I came over to court, and we've got a forty percent chance on Saturday with a potential of sixty percent on Sunday, and throughout the week, it's either ten to twenty. But the, the thing that bothers me is that once this weekend gets here, it all drops back down to ten to no more than twenty percent for almost a two week period. And this is the time of the year where the humidity has a tendency to drop with the cooler, which, Commissioners, I'm, I'm in favor of leaving it in place.
I am too. Is that a concern?
It's still pretty dry in the north.
Sir?
It's still dry in the north.
Well, I, I'd like to say in the past, we have had boundary lines drawn to where south of, say, thirty, the ban was lifted, and north of thirty, the ban stayed in place. I, I am getting a lot of calls about garbage sanitation issues with garbage piling up, and you, you Chief Vickers had said that in the south, we receive more than four inches. So I did want to express that to the court, that, you know, we have done that in the past.
But, you know, if it, if it's garbage and people are worried about health concerns, we do have the solid waste deposits throughout the county where they can take that for a dollar a bag. If it's trash, that's not, I mean, I know that might be a breeding ground for snakes and varmints and things of that sort, but.
Well, some of them state they were on fixed income, so I did mention that to them, that we had deposit stations that they could take their garbage.
Sure.
But, you know, you do have those that are on fixed incomes, but I thought I would at least put that out there for you.
Fair enough.
But I think with the rain that we've had there, pockets where it's real dry, even in the, in the south, southern part of the county, because the rains were very small that we had, there'd be a big downpour here and two miles away if you didn't get any rain, so I think we need to leave it in place for two more weeks anyway, three weeks, whatever.
Sounds, the consensus is take no action at this time. Agenda Item Number Twenty-four, receive any updates on the strategic plan, or do we need to be offered? Hearing none, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-five, is there a motion to adjourn?
If we adjourn.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Twenty-five by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. I'll entertain any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.